Has settled down, so I'll get started. Welcome everyone. Thank you for joining the PPMA Showcase webinar, which will be featuring colleagues from Sheffield City Council and the Best Learning and Development Award Winning Entry. My name's Jane Mather. I'm the PR Manager of Commercial Services Group and we actually sponsored this award. So we've been asked just to host and introduce our speakers. And just a very short little bit about Commercial Services Group. If you haven't heard of us, we deliver a wide range of products and services to local government customers, education, housing, health. We're actually one of the UK's largest public owned but commercially run businesses. And we hope to offer the best of both worlds, business expertise, but alongside commitment to local government and public sector compliance and social value. And all our profits go back to the public purse. And just a little bit of housekeeping before we start. Cameras are welcome to be on, but please stay mute during the presentation session. Questions can be added at any time at the chat, but we'll cover those at the end. The session is being recorded, but only the presenters will be shown. So without further ado, let me introduce our speakers today. We have Jo Charlesworth, who's Head of L and D at Sheffield City Council, and Gaynor Wilkinson, Workforce Development Consultant. So I will hand over first to Jo, who I think is going to do a little bit of introduction.
Great. Thanks so much, Jane. Welcome, everybody. My colleague Gaynor will share our presentation, ready for for you to look at, so you're not just staring at myself. And I just want to share who we are really. Sheffield City Council is, we're a city, but we're a village at the same time. Everybody knows somebody and everybody's got a link to somebody. But we have massive ambitions. So we've been struggling for a few years, but by 2028, we're aiming to be one of the best performing councils in the country. And to get there, we're building an organisation that truly reflects and respects our diverse communities and involves people in everything we do and delivers results for the city. We're really proud that we are one of the top three employers in Sheffield with over eight thousand colleagues, working across sixty different service areas. So we're a Metropolitan Borough Council. We do lots of things that are non-statutory. We've still got a music department hanging around in there somewhere that's arms length. So, you know, we're a big diverse organisation and we provide nearly three percent of all jobs in the city. Each year, we welcome around seven hundred new employees who will help shape Sheffield's future. And our learning team is responsible for corporate learning. That's learning that cuts right across the council, such as recruitment selection, which hits every manager in the organisation and a number of employees too. So we don't just leave recruitment to managers. We do encourage employees to sit on recruitment panels. So the L and D team is led by myself and we've got a mix of learning partners, digital adoption specialists, got talent leads, got instructional designers, delivery experts, LMS administrators. So we do quite a big bag of stuff. And we make sure our learning programmes support the council's transformation goals and that they deliver real impact. And the the award, award-winning recruitment and selection training, it's really nice to be able to say that, was the very first of our organisation-wide measurable programmes that we've delivered. We've shifted from being very much an order-taker, menu-based learning service to one that's a real strategic partner now. And this was our first corporate organisation ask to help us shift something that we needed to change in the organisation. It fits, you know, if we think about our values that we adopted just a few years ago. You know, we've got people at the heart of what we do, open and honesty, guide how we work and together we get things done. And our values really mean that we're driven by people's growth, their voices and their potential. We believe in building trust through the openness and honesty, and we know that working together is how we make things happen. For us in L and D, that means creating learning experiences that are inclusive, accessible and genuinely impactful. As I said, we've shifted to be among that strategic partner so that we can see that impact on a corporate scale. And then we do believe that when our people grow, the whole city benefits. It's really nice for us to be able to see that link into the city. If we're developing our teams and our individuals and having impact, that does benefit the city. And if you speak to my team, that's what drives them, knowing that they're contributing to the success of the city. And with continued commitment to continuous learning, reflecting, sharing feedback, always improving. And collaboration is really key to what we do. We work really closely with the services that we support and involve them in shaping and delivering the learning that's going to make a real difference. So I'm going to hand over to, oh, one more thing to do around the ASK. So.
Sorry, Jo.
That's it. So the ASK began in twenty twenty one. So our equalities data showed we've got a significant under-representation of race and other protected characteristics of our workforce. Our chief executive is really committed to creating a diverse and inclusive organisation. And the equalities data that we've got really backed up the ASK that she had of us. So the council plans set out an ambition to invest in the skills and capabilities of our workforce and attract that new talent to deliver Sheffield for Sheffield and ensure that our people reflect the people that we serve. And we were committed to creating that fair and equitable and inclusive recruitment process. So we needed to make sure that all our panel members were trained to meet this commitment. One of the things that our chief exec asked was, she wanted to, you know, that her her main objective for this learning was to address that under-representation, particularly of race in the organisation. We had a Race Equality Commission as well. So race was a really high agenda, high priority for the organisation. The recruitment and selection training that we designed obviously is not just focused on the under-representation of race. We looked at it holisticly across those protected characteristics. So the ASK came direct from the chief exec. Gaynor worked then on sort of understanding what the ASK was and understanding the implications for us, the team, the organisation and how we recruit. So I'll pass over to Gaynor now, who can share what we actually did.
Thanks, Jo. Hi, everybody. Yeah, so when I was sort of told about the ASK, we decided to take a project approach. The reason for that was because it wasn't just about the learning itself. It was about how we were going to implement it as a mandatory piece of learning. And if any of you work in a large organisation and, you know, very complex, that's not an easy thing to do. So we decided to take that project approach with this. So the first thing that I did was I carried out a comprehensive review of our recruitment and selection training, because we did have recruitment and selection training back then. But what we looked at was moving it from being recommended for people to do was to making it mandatory for all panel members. And looked at various options, so things like, do we just have the chair of the panel or the recruiting manager trained? Do we have different types of learning for the different roles on a panel? And then obviously, the option that we kind of felt was the best. And actually, what our senior leadership chose was the kind of most ambitious one, was that all panel members must complete the full recruitment and selection training every three years. And that was something where we said, if they did that, they would have approved recruiter status in the organisation. So what was really key for us was involving stakeholders. So for us, that was our executive team, us as learning development, HR recruitment team and our HR systems team as well, because we knew that it would affect the recruitment system as well. And obviously, very key to this was our equalities team, who could review the current learning with our team and make sure that it really sort of embedded the EDI part of it. So they were actively involved in the design, the implementation and the evaluation of the training. I think their involvement did really ensure that it aligned with the organisational goals and it addresses the needs of the workforce. We couldn't just design the learning. As I said, it was about how it would work as a mandatory part of the recruitment process. So it was very much about us getting it done together. And we planned a phased rollout because we knew the sheer numbers, you know, were going to be large. The initial numbers that we were aware of was about twelve hundred people. An initial focus was on these regular recruiters, so we ran reports about who was doing that regular recruitment, then managers and then all staff involved in recruitment panels. So the aim was that in two years, all panel members were to complete the training and have that approved recruiter status. Sorry, it seems to jump two slides each time, so apologies for that. Oh, there I go. It keeps missing slide five. I'm so sorry. There we go. No, that is. Sorry, there we go. So as Jo mentioned about our values earlier on, we very much use those throughout the project. So using our values, you know, EDI is very central to all the values, that tackling discrimination, improving equity and enhancing that service experience, valuing people, so empowering staff, fostering that pride in the organisation and supporting a creative and inclusive environment. And for us, you know, it was about a diverse workforce being a strategic advantage and improving that innovation, morale and service delivery. So the course itself, so we designed the course as a blended learning, so that was digital and in-person, with practical exercises, real-life scenarios and interview practice, which was really important for people. So they began with an e-learning and then moving on to the in-person full-day course. And I think it's important to say that whilst digital blended learning is so familiar to us now, it was very, very much a new concept. This is kind of post-pandemic, twenty twenty one, when we were first looking at this and sort of releasing it in twenty twenty two. So it was quite a step forward for us. So with the content, we take learners on a journey through the various stages involved in recruitment and selection, beginning with the establishment control and justification for role completion. So that was quite an important part that since I would say been strengthened as well. So very much about, you know, do we need to replace that person that's just left? And I'm really thinking about that justification, going through the advertising, you know, how, not just how to advertise, but you know, how to get that advert crafted in the way that'll have the most impact. Shortlisting and developing competency and value-based questions, interview skills to make sure that people felt confident, looking at things like reasonable adjustments and the importance of effective feedback. Key throughout the learning is the significance of maintaining the equality, fairness and inclusion in that recruitment process. So yeah, all learners must complete a mandatory refresher every three years to maintain that status. The course is reviewed annually or if there are changes in policy or practice, which is actually something that has just happened. So it's had a good refresh at that three-year point as well. So there's sorts of challenges that we faced and how we overcame them. I think probably the biggest challenges for us was that cultural shift from recommended to mandatory. It's always difficult in large organisations. It can take time and effort to really get that message through about this is now something that is got to happen. The solution with that, we made sure that we had that strong leadership directive. So when we were sending out the communications about, you know, this is coming, we had different levels of communication, so from the senior leadership teams through to heads of service. And very much that phased implementation. So year one of the project, we made it mandatory for the chair of the panel to be trained. So that gave us a chance to embed the new approach. I think if we'd have tried to go in with everybody, we just wouldn't have had the capacity to do that. And then in year two, we moved to all panel members, so giving people a lot of notice that, you know, this was being implemented. Probably the biggest challenge for us was the high demand for the training, especially from non-managers that were on recruitment panels. Our understanding originally was that most panel members were managers, but actually the reality was different and there were a lot of non-managers. So that really increased that demand for us. And with the broad project timeline of two years, we had things that happened within our own team in that timeline. We had a lead trainer who'd actually designed the learning with the EDI team. They actually moved on. They got a different job, you know, different corporate priorities. So, you know, we did have challenges on our side as well. So the solution for that was we prioritised the regular recruiters and targeted them first. We managed waiting lists and we reserved places that urgent recruitment needs. So sort of using our system to sort of almost have a couple of hidden places. So that when, you know, we work very closely with HR colleagues. So if we were notified that there were, you know, people that were struggling to get on the learning, we knew that we'd got some spare places. But I will admit, it was tricky for a period of time. So that was very much getting our team for the learning management system on board with what we were doing and getting their support. And then another challenge was ensuring that consistency and quality across all recruitment panels. So this goes back to the how did we make it mandatory? So we worked with our systems team to talk about different solutions that might work with this. And the one that we decided on was actually having as part of the recruitment system that the managers go through when they're doing recruitment was to have a a declaration on the system. So there was that question on the system that, you know, is your panel all been trained? And they make that declaration on there. We also have an approved recruiter list that's regularly updated. So that comes directly, the data comes directly from the learning management system. So anybody at any time can have a look at who are approved recruiters. So the impact evaluation, because we took that project approach, and as Jo was saying, we've kind of moved much more into that impact evaluation since this project. We did learning impact evaluations at the end of each of the two years. So the final impact evaluation, so our target was to reach one thousand two hundred completions in that two-year period. And we actually got just over that one thousand two hundred and thirty-four. And those numbers have continued to increase. I think it's something like one thousand eight hundred now. You know, we got some really good data from the impact evaluation. So ninety-seven percent of learners rated that their knowledge had increased before and after the training. So that was a fifty-three percent increase in knowledge. And we've got a steady rise across protected characteristics of new starters, particularly for the BAME and disability-declared new starters. So we had a look, you know, we've got our systems team to run data for us so that we can have a look over. I think we looked over a three-year period, so from when we started the project to where we were at the end of the project. And we could, you know, see those steady increases. So that's really what we were looking for. Oops, sorry. And then the service delivery. So what we could tell from the feedback was that people had got increased confidence, there was more consistency in people's approaches and a more competent diverse workforce was coming from that. And the feedback was overwhelmingly positive with learners reporting like-bug moments that they'd had practical improvements in advertising, shortlisting and interviewing. So that was all, you know, really positive for us. And I think doing the impact assessment at the end of year one, let us see that we were on the right track. So as we were going into year two and we're moving it to everybody needed to be trained, you know, we knew that we were on the right track with that. Lessons learned. I think one of the big things was around the blended learning and the practical exercises are really highly valued. Because we were moving very much to a digital first and foremost post-pandemic. You know, we were asking the questions of should we move this online? But the actual, the lead trainer was very, very kind of convincing that it needed to stay in the classroom and that people were getting so much out of that. And I think that impact assessment at the end of year two showed the value in that, I think, getting people together to do the mock interviews, learning together. And that's not to say that that doesn't happen in a virtual classroom. We have lots of that happening. But for this particular course, it did remain one of our in-person sessions. Collaboration, absolutely key in this, as with anything. But us working with the EDI team, systems team, recruitment team, it ensured that quality product and process. And the continuous feedback from learners was essential for us for, you know, improvements along the way. You know, we got such rich data. It was, as Jo said, this was the first one that we'd really done that level three impact assessment on. And it was quite a lot of work at the time, but it was so valuable. And we've done that a lot more since. And, you know, you sort of go back to how we did this one. So you've kind of got that template for how we've done it since. And I think one of the big things for me was using that consistent, robust scoping process. This is something that we've changed a lot in the last couple of years. So we've implemented a performance consultancy approach to scoping requests for learning. This is now embedded and it's a very robust process. It includes, you know, we work with services and subject matter experts to identify business gaps and opportunities. We create learner personas for learning now. We agree learning outcomes and impact evaluation in advance. The process is not vastly different from what we took with this learning. But I think we've actually got that embedded now. So it's almost like a project approach for any request that we get, whereas it was quite new to us with recruitment and selection. So it comes, I'd say it comes a lot more easy to us now. And we've got that template in place and we get all of that scoped out before we hand it over to our team for design and delivery. So the evolving offer, so if we think about sustainability, so we've now got a three-year refresher cycle that's in place. We've got the people that have gone, hit that three-year now. We've skilled up new trainers to make sure that we can keep up with that demand. It's still high, but it's now manageable. The expansions included an online refresher. So where we had the high demand for the in-person learning, a lot of those people are now moving on to the online refresher. So that that sort of takes some of that demand away. This training ensures that managers stay updated with the latest recruitment policies and best practices. So they complete the refresher and they'll contribute to a consistent, high-quality recruitment and selection process ongoing in the organisation. If somebody's not done any recruitment in that three-year period, they're expected to do the full course again. Or as well, if somebody doesn't feel confident, because you might have recruited once in three years or you just want that full refresher, they are welcome to do that full course again. We have also added in some additional micro-learning modules on reasonable adjustments and giving effective feedback. And that particularly goes into a feedback for newer diverse candidates as well. So there's that additional sort of guidance that's become available for people as well. I'm just going to pass back to Jo to talk a little bit about See It Be It, which was part of that evolving offer. So she's just going to fill you in a little bit on that.
Yeah, I think probably it's this that swung it for us because of the social value that we were putting back into the city through our recruitment and selection training. So part of our continuous professional development around the recruitment and selection, we support the See It Be It campaign. So the See It Be It campaign is one that works with a number of disadvantaged schools in Sheffield. There's twenty-five of them, a number of those secondary schools. And as part of the secondary school offer in the kind of getting to new time as somebody who attended school so long ago. I think he's probably year ten-ish or maybe year nine, where they do mock interviews to help them prepare for moving into the working environment. And that's either, you know, going for interviews for apprenticeships or even interviews for college. It helps them understand what an interview feels like, so they're not going into it cold. So that's where we come in as an organisation and we support that right across those twenty-five schools. And our employees who are accredited interviewers are expected to make themselves available to support that, those interviews. And you know, the See It Be It campaign makes such a big difference to young people in the city. It's not just the interview things, you know, they do work right from primary school, introducing young people to different roles. You know, because there is that whole thing. I remember working with Damien Hughes a long time ago, where he was speaking to young people in Manchester, because that's where he's based, around what their aspirations were. And their aspirations were mainly to be a drug dealer in that area, because that's what they saw. They were the people that had got the nice cars, got the nice clothes. So we need to, at that primary school level, really start introducing those different role models so that people can see, you know, that somebody like them could be a doctor, somebody like them could be a local authority planner. You know, if there's anybody I'm planning here, I apologise, but you know, what an aspiration to be a local authority planner. And supporting them right through their education, education journey right into employment. Something that they did this summer was a sector safari. So they got a puzzle book and there were thirty different organisations that they, using this puzzle book, moving around the city centre, introduced them to thirty different sectors of employment. So, you know, to highlight what that broad breadth is. You know, my kids, all I can really tell them about is local authority, because this is all I've ever done. I don't really know much about other options. So even for, you know, my children that didn't go to a school that was in a deprived area, they're still got narrowed. So this sector safari was open to all schools, but it's such an amazing project. It's funded through central government. We've got partners with the South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority and South Yorkshire Careers and the Careers and Enterprise Service. So it's not just a local council thing. There's a website if you want to find out more information. And I can hook you up with Cheryl Plant, the manager of the team that look after See It Be It. And it's really important to us as an organisation that we are giving value back into the city. And this is one way that we could do it. Thanks, Gaynor.
Thank you. And that just takes me to say thank you very much for listening. It's been, you know, a pleasure to share the journey. I'll just go back right to the start of the slides with our picture, obviously, you know, terrific. Yeah, we were, no, it's not. No, it's not. Well, it is of me in the middle, but yeah. You know, we were absolutely over the moon thrilled, as you can see from our faces, getting the award. You know, we were just, yeah, absolutely thrilled. So yeah, thank you for listening and welcome any questions. I'll just stop sharing this.
Thank you very much, Bas. That was.
Thank you very much, both. That was really interesting. There aren't any questions from our audience at the moment. I did just have, have one question myself actually, which was really about when you were rolling out the recruiters programme. Did you get much pushback, particularly from people who'd done a lot of recruiting? Because I can see it being something that people think, oh, I know how to do this. I've, I've, I've sat on lots of panels. So it's, it's quite a transition, isn't it, when you go into that mandatory training?
Yes, yeah, it's, I'll let you come and drop it. I'll just, yeah, just to say, I, I remember seeing some of that in the impact evaluation. And I think the, the approach that we took, because yes, you're absolutely right, was to, to sort of say to those people, what you bring into that classroom for that day is so valuable because you're sharing your experience and just trying to change that mindset a little bit. Because you, you can understand why it can be a little bit irritating. But actually, there have been changes with recruitment and, you know, that EDI aspect of it and, and different tips that were being given that people didn't hear two, three years ago. So yeah, trying to just switch it that, you know, it's so valuable for you to be there on that day. But yes, yes, we did get knockback. Yeah.
I was a little bit harsher with my conversations with some of my more senior colleagues who say, you know, that they got the experience. And mine was, well, if it was working, we wouldn't need to be doing this learning. So yeah, I was quite harsh. If they were doing such a brilliant job of recruiting, then we wouldn't need to be putting in a mandatory recruitment training programme.
Yeah, no, fair point. Okay, well, we haven't got any other questions. So I'll give people a little bit of time back and say thank you very much, Jo, and thank you, Gaynor, and everyone who's attended. That was really interesting. And I, I think lots of organisations, not just local government, can really learn from your example. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye.